All is made in order, so you join us. Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to freedom and liberty which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good afternoon, everybody. We will begin the minutes of our June 17 meeting.
Please approve.
And we have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the June 17 minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. First up, IT Director Michael King. Michael, are you here yet? No, we'll wait on him. For Community Corrections, Mr. Steve Bills. Steve, you have a 144 request.
Actually, two part timers. I'm just here asking for permission to proceed with the hiring of these two individuals that are listed there. Both would be part-time, doing mostly GPS tracking, but cross-training, some case management to help out. We just got the boom just got lowered on us on Friday of our grants, so, pretty much statewide, so we got cut nine percent. Some counties got cut up to twenty. So, you'll hear from the other entities on that grant locally, very much we all took ahead. So, it's looking like part-time for a while, and try to make things work out. I've got some close to retirement and that kind of thing, and I hope to be able to replace them with full-time folks, but trying to find some good part-time help as well to kind of move in that direction in case the time does come and do it. But interviewed both of these, and they're both interviewed outstanding, and we'll do it, I'm sure, do a good job. One has a, already has a full-time job, it's only twenty hours a week, so she is anxious to get a full-time work week, and I think she'll be a great asset for us as well.
How many hours a week are you able to give your part timers?
Well, it just varies on vacations and that kind of thing, but we typically tell them that it could be anywhere. One week it might be sixteen, might be twenty-four, and, you know, obviously you can schedule them. You can use them forty, I just can't routinely schedule them for thirty hours as far as you guys understand that.
Yeah.
Because then they become a full-time employee, but it would be just not average more than thirty hours per week, but...
It's just not consistent.
Fairly, but not, you know, we try to do average at least three days per week if they want that much, but then someone, you know, would like to, whatever they can get, they like to max it out, so...
Okay.
I approve the 144 hired at Community Corrections, part-time, two.
Second.
We have a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to approve the 144 requests from Community Corrections, the hire of two part-time positions for Michelle Caldwell and Clara Judd. Any further questions? All in favor, signify the saying, aye.
Aye.
Three ayes, Jim. Now, Steve, they've informed you that you're going into a nine percent cut for your current funding year.
For '26, starting January 1.
Okay.
That, for that calendar year of '26, we will, are getting cut nine percent. And they also cut out, on top of that, our gel treatment program, they cut those out statewide, so there'd be no gel treatment program. That was a separate grant that I wrote, I mean, it was part of Community Corrections' grant, but they cut those out statewide as well. And for us, that was a $60,000 grant. Some counties were using about $275,000 a year for gel treatment, so we got cut that. And there, like I said, there's other cuts in the other entities in our grant, in the Community Corrections' grant from DOC. They cut their entire state Community Corrections' budget by a little over seven percent, or $7 million, I'm sorry. It went from seventy-two million to sixty-five approximately, so it's, we knew it was coming. I figured we'd get cut five to ten, we got cut nine, and I thought they would probably eliminate gel treatment, and they did.
Well...
Some of that's kind of self-inflicted maybe, because we have done a good job of trying to build funds and keep them for rainy days, and, you know, if you have a rooftop, you go out, that's, you know, $25,000, $30,000 to replace, we like to have the money to fix that. Because as you know, you know, we would pay that, we always have, but it's, I think they kind of punish us for having that kind of money sitting there in reserve. I don't know that, nobody's told me that. I shouldn't be saying that in a public meeting, but I will, because there's guys that say a lot more out loud. I'm not one of those that usually do that to them, but that's where we're at.
Well, if that's the case, you wouldn't be the first one I've seen be punished for being smart with money.
Well, we're kind of, you know, we did some of that money for the, you know, the center over there, we made that contribution, and we were building that back up, you know, trying to, you know, keep the funds there, because we never know. I wanted to get the lot sealed and striped and all that stuff over there, the upper and lower lot, Sheriff's Department lot down below and that kind of stuff, but, you know, they're making it hard on us, you know, now, to be frugal and hang on to that money, so we'll see. It's not going to change for '26, it's, those award letters, when they send them out, that's what it is. And that comes, we knew that was coming, it came right from the top, that announcement, you know, they were saying that at every meeting I went to, they were saying at least five percent, so when they said that "at least" part, it told me it was going to be. So, nine percent plus the gel treatment for us, and, you know, I'm sure Prosecutor's Office can tell you about their grant and probation's grant, and those things just, or drug court, we all got cut.
It probably hasn't been granted by, you know...
Yeah, it's not guaranteed, I mean, it's, it's everywhere.
How is that going to affect the gel treatment?
There will be no gel treatment program.
Is there anything at all that can supplement it, or...
The sheriff can speak more on that, but I don't know if Iraq, Iraq team does any classes over there or not. If they're doing classes, hopefully they can, it's basically going to free up, Derek was in that block, and I'm sure it probably helped jail staff some, having somebody in there that kind of kept them busy and occupied for the day to where the jail staff didn't have to spend as much time, you know, going in and checking up, but, you know, it's just, again, when we first hired Derek, we didn't, I don't think we even had the gel treatment grant at that time, so he wasn't hired for that position. I'm not going to eliminate, I'm going to do my very best, but not eliminate any positions. I'm going to shuffle some people around, and like I said, I've talked to some folks that are close to retirement, and just told them that no pressure, just asking, you know, just so it helps me try to figure out how we're going to go forward, so that... I'm not going to push anybody out, and I'm hoping to keep everybody there, and, because we need the people we have. I mean, they expect a lot, they expect more every year out of us as far as what we do with the participants of the program, but with less money, so we'll see, we'll see what happens. We're all, and I think everybody's, you guys and council, everybody's in the same boat. Cats are everywhere, so...
Okay, Steve, thanks for the report.
We'll make do. Thank you, guys.
Michael King, you have a contract to consider today?
Yep, it's the support contract and software renewal for the DCRs for Court, both the Circuit Superior Court. It's $525 each, or $525 for the Court, each Court for the software renewal, that keeps the DCR software up to date, and the $475 for the maintenance and support for each Court, so a total of $2,000 for BIS Digital. I have that in my budget, it was something that I had budgeted for, so just want to go ahead and get that approved so I can get it paid.
Okay, those are things that you currently use and we've got to have, right?
Yeah.
We have a motion by Dale, second by Tracy, to approve the IT Department request for recontracts pertaining to... I won't even try to repeat all the things you just told there.
Well, it's just the one, one in West...
Okay. Any further question? All in favor, signify the saying, aye. Three ayes, Jim.
You leave me?
Don't think so. Mr. Gettinger, do you have anything to report for highlighting?
I'll make a little bit anyway. Last week, we chipped and sealed twenty and a half miles of road in the county over here. Went out Alquana Road, out Springersville Road, 450 East. That got delayed a little, that was supposed to happen first week of June, and distributor truck that we lease from Illinois went down, so they couldn't get here till last week, so, but that's quite a bit more than has been done in the past, so we'll be many years catching up with the roads that have been paved, but, but that's a good start, I guess, so that was an awful busy week, I think numbers ended up, 3,100 ton of gravel out of IMI put on these roads, and that's quite a bit more than I think they've been bringing out of there in a week, in the four days, so. And we will be going back probably sometime next week and brushing them roads off, because there's always some loose gravel, but the, they recommended not doing that in too big a hurry, let that have plenty of time to work in like it's supposed to, so we'll be going back over them and brushing that loose off here next few weeks. Went really well, had a breakdown or two, some of it was on our end, so it's mechanical equipment, it's going to happen, so it's what it is, but that's, that's over with now for this year, I think, so we did accomplish that last week, that was all we did last week, nothing else, nothing else.
Twenty and a half miles in one week, pretty good.
The fellers down there worked awful hard at that, I'll give them credit from now on about that, and, you know, we even stayed over an hour or so, you know, a few times last week to get there, and, you know, had a, had a equipment failure one day and had to turn back two tanks of oil, so that's not really good, but they'll be a little, they won't charge us for the oil, but they'll charge us for having to send it back, but like I said, it's, it's mechanical. It was actually, the equipment failure was on that chip box that's three years old. Should not ever have had any trouble with that yet, but we can't help it, it is what it is, so... So, for having even a breakdown in the middle of there, we did accomplish an awful lot last week with that, so. And the roads are nice, a little bit of loose gravel on them, but, you know, Alquana Road had some pretty good cracks in it, because hadn't been nothing done, and, well, hopefully it stays that way, but it looks really nice as far as filling in the cracks and doing what that chip and seal was supposed to do, so, so that was how things went last week, but anything else?
Are you good next?
Working on phone calls, so we're not lax for anything to do, I promise, it's just a matter of getting, getting there, and the weather hasn't cooperated real well. We was going to do some paving this morning, I thought it was going to rain overnight, we'd be able to do some patch paving this morning and tomorrow, well, you know what it did all morning here, so we did get cut off on that a little bit, where we get our hot mix from a few weeks ago. They had Fayette County, Wayne County, and Henry County all coming in there at the same time getting the hot mix, and we can't, we can't get nothing done. We got trucks setting up there in line for over an hour, we just, we had to quit, we're like, we're spinning our wheels here, so... And they've called since, he called last week saying, hey Chris, we're good if you need, which last week we was committed to that, so... So, we'll be able to get some hot mix here and get back to fixing some more stuff here pretty quick, so that's what's on the agenda next. We did do, spent a couple days Berman Roads out west of town, a little bit there, and that went pretty well. Got a lot of roads to do, probably every road in the county needs it, so we'll, we'll get to that too, but we're trying to fix the potholes here now first, and then we'll try and get the, the thing about the Berman is, it hasn't been done for years, so there's an awful lot of material to haul off, that's what we're finding, where, these roadsides are full, you know, the water can't get off of them, there's a lot there, so just part of it, it is what we've got to do, so we'll get there, just takes a while. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Chris. Sheriff Jones, do you have anything you want to talk about?
Nothing.
County Surveyor, do you have anything you need? Mr. Stevens, do you have anything you need to...
Oh, you need me, I was looking for my dad. Afternoon, everybody. I'm just asking for permission to put in for an additional appropriation to purchase office furniture for my office. I've got the three quotes, and I have copies of it, if you guys need them, I can provide that to you. Just permission to put in for the paperwork to go to the council for, ask for additional appropriation for funding for that.
What kind of office furniture are you looking for?
Desk, complete desk and a small table to go in there. The desks that I have are bottoms falling out of one of them, they're old, they've been in there since, I think, before the surveyor was there before, or the assessor was there before, they're more than twenty-plus, or more than probably forty years old, the desks are, and they just don't... They work to sit that, but as far as like, they catch and, you know, just, that and it's old furniture, I mean, it just needs to be updated. I'm getting the office painted, working with that with maintenance, just to make the appearance of that office look better, and then functionality of what I do.
We've got, we've got some, some furniture sitting around in two or three different places. Did you talk to Josh Jarboe about any of that?
No, didn't know anything about it.
Might already have what you need sitting around here, and I haven't seen what you, what you've been looking at either.
One of them, the first one, which was office, office, I've got one from Office 360, got one for another one, and then the office shop is definitely the cheapest, that's who I was going to go with. They come in at twenty, just shy of $2,600, the other two are over $4,000 for the exact same stuff, so the cheapest that I found, and what works for what I'm looking for is $2,600, is what I'm asking for. One quote's only one page, the other one's a couple pages, and then the last one is for the office shop. He's worked with multiple spots here in the, in the county to do.
Do you have a line item in your budget for office?
I do.
You just already have it in it, or...
No, I've never, I've never used it, it's just never something I've ever used.
So, this is considerably over, or that's what we don't know?
I mean, I mean, mine is normally salary, my travel, postage, and printing is all I've ever utilized. I didn't put it in my budget for last year because I wasn't at that point where...
If you guys want to take a look at this, the additional appropriation tonight couldn't happen for the council, because it's advertised anyway, so I don't see any rush for you guys to make any determination tonight or today.
Yeah.
I think normally, we ask people, like you stated first, is to check within to see if there is something here that could be used first, then we would need to receive it to view.
Right, no, and that's, and I understand that, like, no, I can't go to the council until August, because it, there's a cutoff date, but I'd ask permission for you guys first to, to do that.
This council's not in very good mood right now for any additional appropriations on anything.
I understand that.
I hate to ask them for anything right now.
Yeah, I thought you'd choose to put it in your budget next time, if you need things, after you find out.
Well, I mean, it's going to be the same thing, because, I mean, we've already been asked to not ask for anything, so... And I understand it's a tough time, I understand that, but, I mean, this has been something for a long time that's just always gone by the wayside.
You haven't talked to Josh Jarboe about any of the surplus stuff we have, that we already have?
Didn't know there was, I mean, I know that, like, I mean, they're going to take, come take my filing cabinets that I no longer need and stuff, but as far as like desk and the desk and the extra table kind of thing, no, I don't know that there was anything available or out there. I don't know where and why, I know that there's a lot in the, I know that there's a lot of like chairs and filing cabinets and things like that, which isn't anything that I need. I'm talking about using, getting a new functionable desk, and that's what I'm asking for. Because that office is in disrepair as it is. And I understand if he's got to, if it needs to wait until later on, then that's fine, but... I'm, I'm learning in all this too, so...
I think we just want to table it until you, and you talk to Josh.
I'll go look to see what's out there.
Okay, we've got a motion by Tracy, second by Dale, to table this request for an additional appropriation till later. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Then I'll just get back with you after I talk to Josh.
Yeah, here, take this back with you, Ron, and check with Josh and see if he's got anything sitting around that suits her, now, it's, it wouldn't be brand new, but it may be...
But if it's functional, I mean, the, I mean, the main issue is, I mean, like, like the desk is, they're old, they're broken, and they don't operate properly and stuff, I mean, they hold stuff up, that's great, but I have so much mixed-match furniture over there, it's embarrassing to sit there in front of people to walk in and see an office that looks like that, so carpet, I mean, I've, I've went out at my own personal expense and bought carpet to cover up what's in there, of my own personal expense to put up stuff on the walls to cover up them, and that's why he's going to paint for me, because I talked to him about it, and he said he does have extra paint. He can have his guys, or himself, come in and paint my office when it's most convenient for them, so I'm trying everything I can do to update it without more, I mean, this is just a personal expense I can't go to.
Yeah, I understand that. Progress around here is slow.
No, I understand that, I get it, and that's why I don't ask for a lot, I don't, and that's why my budget is, is low as it is, is because it's salary, travel is, I mean, and I had to switch some line, had to pull from one line to go to another because mileage went up, so when I asked for it, I was based on the previous year's mileage, and mileage went up, so the number of miles to go back and forth to training, but I don't spend the night up there training, I don't do any of that, I drive back and forth, so I do everything I possibly can to, to keep everything I do as low as possible.
Well, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
And I think, I think council's going to enforce some new rules on us next year for sure, it's going to be...
Well, and that's, well, I was trying to, if there's any possible way to do it now, that's great, if not, then we're going right back to what I was doing, so...
Okay. All right, anything else?
No, good. Well, one other thing, the bill that got pushed through, 433, the only real changes that came out of it, there was a lot in it. The, the Indiana Department of Veterans Affairs still has oversight over training and what I do as far as the technical side of things, like they always have, but there was a piece in there about changing to where they would hire new personnel and hire and fire, that's out. The things for, like what would affect the auditor for benefits for property taxes, things like that, all that stayed the same, nothing's changed there. The only thing that really changed is, is that we're, are required to utilize the programs that are already out there, the electronic versions of the programs that are already out there, which I've already been doing. Training is mandatory for us quarterly, we have to go, if I can't make the one in my district, I have to go to another district to go to training. Like you physically have to be there now, to, before, it's like if something was going on, they would just send you the slides and you'd be good. Yearly training is still mandatory in Indianapolis, and that's two days, and that's going to change next year too, because the, the War Memorial is no longer funded by the state, so the War Memorial might be closing down. It's just, it's a budget thing for them too. The state budgets the War Memorial up there in Indianapolis in the circle, and they're no longer doing it, so they're going to have to find other funding to keep that memorial open, so we're not going to be able to go up there for training anymore. So, it might be Atterbury, it might be a different location, so, but it's still two days, we go there two days, lectures, pass out new information, VA comes in, Vic VA comes in, talks to us, other people come in and talk to us, just to keep us up to date on what we do. So, that's completed, I've already done all that, I'm already utilizing all the programs that, and systems that I'm supposed to be using, and go from there. So, we're all up to date here, so there's nothing, nothing new coming down the pike or anything like that. And a lot of those things that were in that bill got let go, because they just weren't. of those things that were in that bill got let go, 'cause they just weren't, they weren't ready for them, so.
I didn't know they was gonna shut down the War Memorial.
We just found out. We just found out last Tuesday. 'Cause they said, hey, if you got any ideas or locations that we can do this training at, by all means, let us know. If I could pump up the economy here by bringing ninety-two service officers in, I would, but there's just no place for us here to do it.
Hmm, okay.
But any other questions or anything, or concerns? All right, thank you.
Thanks, Ron. Um, County Attorney, do you have anything?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Anyone have any mail you wanna share? Have any old business? Um, under old business, I will mention this. A year or a while back, we did have a discussion, didn't we, on that postage machine up in the clerk's office? Tracy, you were gonna check, see if it was available through the post office, and what did you find?
It's no longer available like that. They don't operate that way.
Okay. Well, um, do we want to renew an expired contract with the postage meter provider and let them upgrade our machines or not?
Wouldn't it cheaper if we'd up, if we upgraded and went with a new contract? I remember thinking right.
You see, we're, we're paying that, for that service on a monthly charge right now. It may have been, but I, if I remember right, I think the, the, a new machine with a five, five pound scale is gonna be like ten dollars a month higher, if I recall right. This guy has been reaching out, and I know we've made a decision on it or not, and I just don't, I don't think we ever did anything for sure on it. We, I know we discussed it, but I'd bring that up.
Doesn't everybody use it?
Yeah. The biggest users of that machine up there would be the assessor, the treasurer. Jane, your office uses it some, don't they?
Extension office does some, clerk's office for the courts uses it.
It'd be hard to find somebody around here that doesn't use it, um, at all. The biggest users would be treasurer and assessor.
Is that what it's a necessity?
Well, it is. Well, it's either that, or we take totes of mail up to the post office and process it up there. It's, that's more convenient here.
Sheriff ain't doing anything?
Hey, that's an idea. Yeah.
I'll move to approve the contract.
I'll say.
Okay. Um, I've got a motion by Dale second to Tracy to approve, um, new contract with our postage, um, meter provider in the clerk's office. All in favor of signify the saying, aye?
Aye.
Three ayes. Um, and I don't think I have anything else on this list. Okay, do we have anything under new business? No, Mr. Bulmer was originally gonna be here about a drainage problem, but I think he got that cleared up yesterday. Is there any patron concerns today? All that leaves is claims and payroll.
Is he, he got it?
No, he doesn't wanna speak on camera.
Okay.
He's camera shy.
We got a base for radio.
Move it, approve, thank you, pal.
I'll say.
Okay, we have a motion by Dale second to Tracy to approve claims and payroll. All in favor, signify the saying, aye?
I, I think you mentioned that.
Oh, yeah, I remember seeing that email on there. That concludes the agenda. Are we forgetting anything?
I sneezed.
Are you sure?
I think you were about to sneeze.
Okay.
I moved to approve, or moved to, please. I'm sorry.
A motion by Tracy second by Dale to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
The three ayes were adjourned. Thank you all very much.